Join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. And please let the record note that all council members are present except Ms. Marler and Mr. DeBary this evening, and will be working toward filling a vacancy on the council later this evening. We have minutes of the meeting of November 16th and December 19th, and without objection, they'll be approved. Move on then to our committee's schedule for the 9th and the week of the 20th. Ms. Raybine.
So for folks watching on television and interviewing audience tonight, City Council doesn't meet next week. Next week, Monday, is the observance of Martin Luther King Day. So we're setting up committee meetings for the coming two weeks. The Public Works Committee will meet on the 11th, that's this coming Wednesday, from 9:30 to 10:30. The Land Use and Planning Committee will follow from 10:35 to 12:15. The Administration and Finance Committee will meet from 1:15 to 1:25, and the Committee of the Whole will meet from 1:30 to 5 o'clock. The week of January 16th, the Public Safety and Health Committee will meet at 9:25 in the morning on Wednesday, the 18th, till 9:40. Parks and Conservation will meet from 9:45 to 10:30, and Land Use and Planning will meet from 10:35 to noon. And for a particular programming note, if you will, for folks who live in Ward II or have applied for the vacancy that's in Ward II, we're planning on conducting interviews in Committee of the Whole this week, Wednesday, and those will go from 3:00 to 5:00 in the afternoon. And depending on the number of folks that council selects to interview later on in this meeting, they may be scheduling an additional Committee of the Whole next week on the 18th in order to finalize and round out the interviews if we have more than four candidates that we're going to be interviewing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Raybine, any changes to the meeting schedule? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda this evening. Ms. Matthew Jenkins.
Candy Matthew Jenkins, 1211 Cooper Street. Happy New Year to everybody. I want to direct your attention to a website that's available on vaccinations, and it's And there, that website is giving an insight look on vaccinations and I feel the truth behind some things that are going on with that situation that I think people would gain a lot of information from. I'm still reading from the Soviet art of brainwashing, psychopolitics, the art of mental healing as read into the Congressional Record on American activities, 1936 to 1939. And we are on a new chapter and getting closer to closing this ordeal you have been sitting through. Anatomy of stimulus-response mechanisms of man. Man is a stimulus-response animal. His entire reasoning capabilities, even his ethics and morals depend upon stimulus-response machinery. This has long been demonstrated by such Russians as Pavlov, and the principles have long been used in handling the recalcitrant in training children and bringing about a state optimum behavior on the part of the population. Having no independent will of his own, man is easily handled by the stimulus-response mechanisms. It is only necessary to install a stimulus into the mental anatomy of man to have the stimulus reactivate and respond anytime an exterior command source calls it into being. The mechanisms of stimulus-response are easily understood. The body takes pictures of every action in the environment around the individual. When the environment includes brutality, terror, shock, or any other activities, the mental image picture gained contains in itself the ingredients of the environment. If the individual himself was injured during that moment, the injury itself will be remain fest when called upon to respond by an exterior command source.
Any other general public comment this evening? All right, with that, we will move on to our consent agenda items listed on the consent agenda. We're approved unanimously in council committees, and we save a little time on Mondays by considering those items together. Ms. Raybine will read the list of consent agenda items aloud, so folks in the audience and those at home will know what we're discussing, and we'll take comment on those items before we vote. Ms. Raybine.
All right. Tonight's consent agenda has, let's see, seven items, and the first, as always, is to approve claims. And because the City Council hasn't had meetings for a little while, we're going to ratify some sets of claims that took place while the council wasn't meeting. First item, is to ratify claims in the amount of $864,362.61 for checks that were dated December 27th of 2016. Number two is to ratify claims in the amount of $4,050,195.26 for checks that were dated January 3rd of 2016. Number three is to approve claims in the amount of $783,197.51 for checks that are dated January 10th, 2017. And number four is to approve claims related to the water acquisition in the amount of $53,427.80 for checks that are also dated tomorrow, January 10th, 2017. Number five is to authorize the mayor to sign Appendix C of Addendum Number One of Fiscal Year 2017, enabling the City of Missoula's Street Maintenance Division to perform additional large-scale maintenance projects on state routes. As described and in accordance with our state route maintenance contract, that agreement is with Montana Department of Transportation. Number six is to approve and authorize the mayor to send Amendment Number 20 to the standard agreement with Morrison Marley Incorporated for Wastewater Treatment Plan Upgrade Services and Co-Generation System Improvements Engineering for $233,025. And finally, number seven is to adopt a resolution in the Missoula City Council to determine and declare a reasonable and safe prima facie speed limit of 25 miles per hour on the portion of Russell Street between Ernest Avenue and McDonald Avenue, Monday through Friday, between 7:30 a.m. to 4:15 p.m.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Any questions or comments from council members? Anyone in the audience care to comment on the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the consent agenda, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Bentley. Bentley votes yes. Kears. Kears votes yes. Heddle. Heddle votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Von Laasberg. Von Laasberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. And Wilkins. Wilkins votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? That is nine eyes and two ebson.
And the consent agenda is approved. I am unaware of any comments from city staff, agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, or the community forum this evening. We'll move on then to special presentations. We do have a proclamation this evening, ladies and gentlemen. Whereas the Rocky Mountain Ballet Theater has spent close to two decades promoting international cultural exchanges through excellence in the performing arts, and whereas the Rocky Mountain Ballet Theater is bringing the world to Montana through its production of the Vienna International Ballet Experience USA in Missoula, and whereas the community of Missoula is dedicated to supporting the Rocky Mountain Ballet Theater's efforts to tear down the walls that keep humanity from collaborating for the common good, and whereas the City of Missoula recognizes the ongoing positive economic, educational, and cultural ripple effects as a result of being a host city for Vibe USA. Now therefore, I, Johnning, and Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana do hereby proclaim the week of January 9th through 14th, 2017, as Vibe USA Week, and there will be lots of dancing. Ladies and gentlemen. Move on now to the public hearing portion of our agenda. Our own council rules and state law set guidelines for inviting comment in a formal way on a variety of issues, and following a staff report on each of these items this evening. Council and I will invite comment. Council typically votes on the same evening as public hearing unless one council member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration. Our first public hearing this evening is on, pardon me, a motion to annex a portion of West Broadway on Flynn Lane, and our staff report this evening happens with Mr. Larson.
Okay. Good evening, Drew Larson, Development Services. And tonight, we are discussing an annexation request from KBA Leasing to annex a tract of land legally described as Lot 6 of Missoula West Industrial Subdivision and Lot 7 and 9 of the same subdivision as amended. The subject property is highlighted in red up here, and the existing city limits are shown in the yellow, and the subject property is located approximately one block west of the intersection of Flynn Lane and West Broadway. The property contains the existing Guardian City Plumbing Building on Lot 6, and the applicants are proposing to construct a new structure and parking on Lot 7 and 9, which requires an additional connection to sewer, and the Sewer Service Review Committee has recommended annexation for that property. So the area to be annexed is in slate gray, and the existing city limits are again shown in the yellow up in the top right corner. State law requires the annexation of adjacent right-of-way. In this case, staff recommends annexing the portion of Flynn Lane from the west edge of the subject property to the West Broadway right-of-way that will be annexed by the Costco property, assuming that Costco is annexed at a later date. The Montana Code annotated permits incorporated cities to assign zoning upon annexation, and it provides three criteria that are also consistent with Title 20 criteria for annexation. The three criteria are to, one, assign city zoning that is comparable with existing county zoning; two, authorize land uses that are consistent with county officials' approved land uses; and three, be consistent with the land use and planning recommendations of the growth policy. The property is currently zoned C-I-1 Light Industrial in the county, which permits a wide variety of commercial and industrial uses. The city zoning comparable to CI-1 is M-1 Limited Industrial, which also permits a wide variety of commercial industrial uses. No special land uses have been approved by the county officials. Our recent R. Missoula City Growth Policy land use designation is Regional and Commercial Services. This land use designation is intended to support a multi-county region which encompasses uses with large land requirements. In addition, the R. Missoula recommends zoning district CI-4, or C-1-4, C-2, and M-1-R for this land use designation. Adjacent property to the west, which may be annexed along with the Costco property, has been recommended to be zoned C-2-4 Community Commercial upon annexation. So because the R. Missoula is the most recent policy document for the area, and that is contrary to the county zoning which was adopted back in the mid-1970s, staff recommends that City Council adopt a resolution this evening to annex and zone the subject property C-2-4 Community Commercial in the city. Thank you, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. With that, I will open the public hearing. Does anyone care to comment on this annexation and zoning? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Seeing none, Ms. Bentley?
I move to adopt a resolution to annex and incorporate within the boundaries of the City of Missoula, Montana, a certain parcel of land located approximately one block west of West Broadway on Flynn Lane, and legally described as Lot 6 of Missoula West Industrial Subdivision, and Lot 7 and 9 of the Missoula West Industrial Subdivision lots 2, 4, 7, and 9 amended, along with a portion of Flynn Lane right-of-way from the west boundary of Lot 9 to the existing city limits to the east, and zone the property C-2-4 Community Commercial in the city, all located in Section 7 Township 13 North, Range 19 West, Principal Meridian, Montana.
That motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've got a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the resolution annexing, Bentley. Yes. Bentley votes yes. Kears. Kears votes yes. Heddle. Heddle votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Von Laasberg. Von Laasberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. Wilkins. Wilkins votes yes. And Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? It's nine eyes and two ebson.
And that motion is approved. Our second public hearing this evening, ladies and gentlemen, is on a resolution to annex a parcel of land at the southwest corner of Flynn Lane and Siren Road, and zone that property RT-10. And again, Mr. Larson, fancy meeting you here, sir.
Back again so soon. Again, Drew Larson with Development Services, and our second annexation request is from Lori and Randolph Parker to annex tract 1A of Certificate of Survey 3996 at the southwest corner of Flynn Lane and Siren Road. The subject property is highlighted here in red and is located south of Hellgate Elementary at the corner of Flynn Lane and Siren Road. The property is currently vacant, and the property owners propose to construct four new dwelling units on the subject property, and the Sewer Service Review Committee, or they actually requested annexation. This one did not go to Sewer Service, I apologize. They just requested annexation to connect to city sewer for their development. The area to be annexed is in slate gray, and the existing city limits are shown in yellow. It shows the property is adjacent to the city on the north and eastern boundaries of the subject property. Again, the Montana Code annotated permits incorporated cities to assign zoning upon annexation and provide three criteria that must be evaluated when assigning a zoning district, and these criteria are also found in Title 20 and are consistent with each other. And the first criteria is assigned city zoning comparable with existing county zoning, authorize land uses that are consistent with county officials' approved land uses, and three, be consistent with the land use and zoning recommendations of the growth policy. The property is currently zoned C-R-R-1, which permits one dwelling unit per acre in the county. However, the county property directly to the east is zoned C-R-R-3, which permits four dwelling units per acre, and the existing, or the residential zoning district that's shown up in the top right corner is RT-10, which also permits four residential dwelling units per acre. So the R. Missoula City Growth Policy land use designation is Residential Medium, which recommends a density of 3 to 11 dwelling units per acre. So based on the growth policy and adjacent zoning, staff recommends that City Council adopt a resolution to annex and zone the subject property RT-10 Residential, and that concludes my presentation on this property.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. With that, I will open the public hearing on this request to annex and zone this property. Anyone interested in commenting? With that, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Seeing none, Ms. Bentley?
I move to adopt a resolution to annex and incorporate within the boundaries of the City of Missoula, Montana, a certain parcel of land located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Flynn Lane and Siren Road, and legally described as tract 1A of Certificate of Survey 3996, and zone the property RT-10 Residential in the city, located in the northwest quarter of Section 18 Township 13 North, Range 19 West, Principal Meridian.
And that motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing. We'll have a roll call vote.
On the resolution to annex, Kears. Kears votes yes. Heddle. Heddle votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Von Laasberg. Von Laasberg votes yes. Well, excuse me, West. West votes yes. Wilkins. Wilkins votes yes. Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. And Bentley. Bentley votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? Nine eyes and two ebson.
And the motion is approved. Thank you, Mr. Larson. We have no additional public hearings this evening. I'll pass on communications from the mayor, and we'll begin general comments from council members this evening with Ms. Heddle, and Ms. Jones, and Mr. Von Laasberg, and Mr. Hess, and Mr. Wilkins.
Well, so many people have asked me how my back's doing now, so I just to let you know I had surgery on the 30th, and as soon as I woke up, the pain was gone, and I only have pain in my back where they did the surgery. So just to let you know, I'm on the mend and doing fine, and thanks for all the people that cared.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. And welcome back. Ms. Bentley?
I wanted to announce that later on in the month, I will be resigning as the chair of the Land Use Planning Committee. I've gotten a job being the Director of Fairgrounds Development at the county, and I don't think I can serve the community well in both capacities, given the time commitment that Land Use Planning Committee takes. It is a bitter, very bitter sweep for me. I love, I love chairing that committee, as you all know, but it's the best thing to do for the community.
Ms. Armstrong?
She stole my thunder. I was just going to congratulate her on her position.
Ms. West. And Ms. Kears. All right, we will move on then to committee reports. Items listed under this agenda item were approved unanimously in council standing committees, and the chairperson of that committee will make a motion reflecting the committee's action, and we'll invite comment on those items. And we'll start with Administration and Finance. Ms. Heddle?
Thank you very much. I would like to recommend that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign a purchase agreement for a police evidence facility generally located in the Riverside Edition in the amount of $1,350,000.
Thank you, Ms. Heddle. That motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Von Laasberg?
I just had a question, excuse me, and a question for the chief, I suppose, and I apologize, I was out sick during committees last week. Wanted to ask the purchase amount, if that was for purchase only, and if there would be subsequent ask for renovations? So whoever can respond to that.
That is the purchase only. There will be additional renovations as well, but the purchase price and the renovations fall within our budgeted CIP.
Okay, thanks. Further questions, comments? Ms. Jones?
I just wanted to say that I'm very supportive of this. I have been in the evidence room twice at least, once for Citizens Law Enforcement Academy, and once when we did our City Council training, and it is high time that this was addressed. I think the Police Department has done a great job, but it is overflowing. They definitely need new facilities, and I'm very happy to be able to support this.
Further discussion? Ms. Bentley?
I support this, too. I appreciate the administration really looking to find the most financially prudent solution. I know we had initially authorized building out at Scott Street, and that was too expensive, and we found a better location, and it's much less expensive and gives us more flexibility moving forward with our space issues. So I appreciate the investigation and the financial prudence.
Further discussion? Mr. Wilkins?
So I definitely support this. I think 11 years ago, we were talking about a new safety building. One of the biggest problems back then was the evidence room. I think this is settling that problem, and it's a long time coming. I'm glad we're finally there.
Further discussion? Seeing none, anyone in the audience care to comment? All right, seeing none, we've got a motion on the floor, and we'll have a roll call vote. Ms. Raybine?
On the acquisition of property for evidence storage, Heddle. Heddle votes yes. Hess. Hess votes yes. Jones. Jones votes yes. Von Laasberg. Von Laasberg votes yes. West. West votes yes. Wilkins. Wilkins votes yes. Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Bentley. Bentley votes yes. And Kears. Kears votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? It's nine eyes and two ebson.
And that motion is approved. We will move on to our second committee report this evening. That happens in Conservation, correct?
Yeah.
It does. Mr. Von Laasberg?
Thank you. I recommend we appoint Paul Parson to the Missoula Conservation District as an urban supervisor for the term beginning January 1st, 2017, and ending on December 31st, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Von Laasberg. That motion is in order. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, anyone in the audience care to comment on the motion? Seeing none, we will have a voice vote on the appointment. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And the motion is approved. Pardon me, we have no additional committee reports this evening. We do have one item of new business, and that's the appointment of a representative to fill the City Council Ward II vacancy. Mr. Wells has resigned that seat. That position remains open, and our process this evening will be to invite council members to nominate one of the 14 applicants for, pardon me, interviews, and those interviews will begin to proceed on Wednesday of this week. I'm just going to go around the table and ask folks who they would like to nominate, whom they would like to nominate, I guess would be grammatically correct. Ms. Heddle?
I apologize if I do not say his last name correctly, but is it David Newe?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Jones?
Roger Seawald.
Thank you. And Mr. Von Laasberg?
Ruth Sweeney.
Thank you. Mr. Hess?
Meerto Becerra.
Thank you, Mr. Hess. Mr. Wilkins?
I'm not ready right yet.
Okay. Ms. Bentley?
Cale Gucci.
Ms. Armstrong? Ms. Armstrong, what did you say? You're not nominating anyone? Okay. Ms. West?
Jack McCath.
And Ms. Kears?
Kenneth Chartrand.
And Mr. Wilkins?
Mike Curran.
And so those are the folks council members have nominated to interview. With that, Ms. Raybine is collecting those names, which we will draw from a Tiffany And this will help us determine the order in which folks will be interviewed.
I'll be the scribe, you be the draw person. Okay, here we go.
First will be Mr. Newe.
Okay, David Newe, your interview will be first. And the next one?
It's me, thank you.
And Mr. Curran?
Mike Curran, your interview will be second.
Yeah, there we go.
Ms. Becerra?
Meerta Becerra, your interview will be third.
Mr. Seawold?
Roger Seawold, that's interview number four.
Ms. Swainey?
Ruth Swainey, interview number five.
Mr. Metcalf?
And Jack Metcalf has interview number six. And that...
Ms. Gucci?
Gail Gucci is interview number seven. And that means we only have one left.
And Mr. Chatrin?
Kenneth Chatrin, interview number eight. So we will be doing the first four interviews on this coming Wednesday from 3:00 to 5:00. Interviews will be half an hour. Tomorrow morning, the folks who have been selected should check your email from my office. You'll receive two sets of interview questions. You'll receive the interview questions the city council plans to ask you during your interviews, and a set of written questions. The written questions, you can complete on your own. They are due back to my office by December 18th at 2:00 p.m. We will post them online, or, excuse me, January 18th, you're right, January 18th, 2017, at 2:00 p.m., and we'll post those online and share them with the city council, as well as all of the citizens of Missoula. And it looks like we're going to be having committee of the whole on the 18th for the remaining four interviews for two hours, so it looks like it'll be committee of the whole from 1:00 to 3:00 on the 18th.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Thank you all who applied. We appreciate your interest. Mr. Hess?
Ms. Raybine, could you read that list, or that order, one more time?
Just as I scrambled the order. Great. Yeah, hang on. So, six, seven, okay, so David Newe's going to lead off, then Mike Curran, Meerta Becerra, Roger Seawold, Ruth Swainey, Jack Metcalf, Gail Gucci, and Kenneth Chatrin.
Ms. Bentley?
Can you clarify the times of the interviews? Are we also having interviews on Thursday, the 19th?
We are not going to do interviews on the 19th. We'll do four of the interviews this Wednesday, two days from now, and then we'll do the remaining four interviews on the 18th from 1:00 to 3:00 in the afternoon. So, so 1:00 to 1:30, 1:30 to 2:30, 2:00, 2:00, yep. They'll all be on Wednesdays, okay?
Anything else on this item? All right, we, from here on out through the remainder of the legislative session, under new business, will have an item that will be legislative update, so we'll be bringing you that at our next regularly scheduled meeting to report on the doings in Helena. And I would be remiss if I didn't wish a speedy recovery to our colleague, Mr. Dubarry, who is watching tonight, he told me, streaming, so hello, councilman. We have no additional items of new business. Are there any additional items to be referred this evening? Seeing none of those, any miscellaneous reports, communications, petitions, or announcements? Seeing none of those, as always, ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your service, and we will be adjourned.